This should be played at high volume, preferably in a residential area.
I did hear that they were coming through Necessary Media.
Because it's necessary. Necessary Media. Necessary Media. Because it's necessary.
Yes! Are we on? Oh, whoa, we're on.
It's necessary to clap?
Oh, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I... Last night... Alright, I'm up. Wait, hold on. Before I get into last night, before I get into last night. Okay, this is... I don't drink coffee, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to America. As you can see, it's blue as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for that brief period of dozing off, but... If, in case you didn't hear by now... That's a shout-out too, if you want. If you guys want to sponsor me right there, Folgers, shout-out. Um, yeah, in case you're just finding out... Last night, if you're one of the people who pay attention to, uh, city issues, like myself... You're just, and you've paid attention. For you, I'm sure, you know, you gave caffeine a lot of business today, because, in case you didn't hear, this meeting started at 6 o'clock, okay, 6:00 PM, and ran all the way until about 12:40 AM. We're talking about an almost seven-hour meeting, folks, with, I believe, like, maybe three, two top, uh, two to three brief breaks. We're talking like two minutes, three minutes, to the point where I believe even one city councillor had said to the council president, "Oh, that was the fastest break I ever seen." I believe that's on audio. We can find that if needed, but... Yeah, so I mean, I was up till 12:40 AM, as a lot of people I know were, and if not... That's why, that's one of the reasons why I want you to be here, because now that I'm a little awake, let's cue that again. Yes! Yes! Ladies and gentlemen, that's right, I am back again. Your hosting friend, Michael D. Olivera, ushering in the Necessary Era every Wednesday here live on Comcast Channel 95. And if you're watching this on YouTube, make sure you subscribe... Here, shh, right there, as per usual. Again, if you're watching this at home, make sure you go to the YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/thenecessarymedia, because what I usually do is I'll take the show and I do a little entertainment value to it, sprinkle a little bit of that on top, and we make the show pop, as per usual. So, again, as I was saying now, if you're tuning in, yes, or if you're one of these people tuning in, one of the reasons I want you to tune is, is to stay informed and entertained at the same time. So, what happened last night now is we had a situation where it was a pretty important meeting, because there was a lot of stuff having to do with the budget, okay, so we had some heavy budget issues. How heavy, you ask? So heavy that we had truckloads, busloads, and car pools of union members. I think, if I've heard this correctly, on, uh, certain call-ins to other radio shows, hundreds and hundreds of people showed up. Now, I think that's, that's challengeable. There was a good amount of people there, but I don't know about hundreds and hundreds. But those busloads, there was, uh, there was definitely, I saw a tractor-trailer show up, you know, one of these like big tractor-trails with the big union logos out there. And, uh, so there was a lot of people out there ready for this budget meeting. And then we also had a lot of concerned citizens. I believe there was a nice little social media push to get some concerned citizens on board, and that went pretty well. Uh, we had our usual, uh... Uh, clapping. I don't know, I don't know what's the appropriate way to describe these wonderful women, but there's a certain section, not just women, but there's a certain section of women who are very getting known for their clapping in the audience, and they were there, they were in full force. A lot of people were in full force, and it was, again, pretty important budgetary stuff. Um, dealing with the privatization of trash, uh, how we're gonna handle that. So that's gonna be pretty much a lot of the subtopics of what's going on in this show. Now, I also have to mention, there's a lot of people who haven't, uh, who don't know my show from earlier. I used to have a radio, a talk radio show. Now, on the talk radio show, a lot of my familiar fans are familiar, my familiar fans, my fans are familiar with my two interns, Jake and Kelly, Team JK. Now, Team JK, they had their ups and downs in their career, their stint as my interns. And I gotta level with you, so far, things have been good, but today, dropped the ball completely. I'm talking to you, Jake. I'm talking to you. It's alright, though. You're still good. Yeah. Alright, no, don't worry about it. Go, go, yeah, go back there, work, go back with Kelly, it's fine. Alright, so, as I was saying, no guests, no guests. Why? Because they did one of these things where they scheduled something, only they put the... You know, you ever hear the expression, "Carry the one"? They forgot to carry the one. So, no guests, but, that's why, if you're watching right now, I encourage you to call in. I want, there's so much frustration built from that city council meeting last night that I encourage everybody out there, uh, watching, to call in, vent your story. I'm gonna vent mine, and we're gonna go from there. This is an excuse to get, let it all out. So, as, now, back to what actually was happening at the city council meeting, and I'm gonna just put my opinion in on this as I go. It got so heated between certain councillors, a certain mayor, you know, one in particular that we have, and, um, it was entertaining. Now, my, one of my favorite moments, I'm gonna get into this real quick right now. Actually, you know what? Let me... Jake, what's going on? Okay. I don't, I don't know yet. If, if you think it'll work, then, what, we got... Doorbells? Oh, alright, we'll check. Yeah, go, go check. We got a guest? See, that's what I'm talking about. I already told you, Jake, and I already told everybody out there. We, there was no guest, because he, the one was supposed to be here, and he put it here. It's supposed to be one of these. And he messed it up. So, instead, again, anybody out there who wanna call in, call in. As the show progresses, at any time, feel free, I'll do my little thing, we'll go from there. But now, as I was saying, and for this one, folks, the gloves are coming off. If the glove don't fit, you must have quit. Last night, we had a couple of issues that I gotta talk about. One, some people were attempt, now, some people were attempted to throw some people under the bus, and I'm gonna call, I don't usually like to do this one, I don't have to, but I'm gonna, so guess what? Here we go. City councillor Rich Cabaseras had, uh, a couple of times, he, he was trying to do what some people out there will say is his job, he's gonna cue, he's gonna go into, um, digging into the questioning as need be. So, he started to go forward with questions and questions and questions. Commendable, fine. That's not the issue, and that's not even really what I wanna bring up. But what was hysterical to me is he tried bringing up the fact that the, our now mayor, Mayor Jezzol Correa, or Correa, Jezzol Correa, if you wanna call him by his former campaign name, or debate name, he, he brought up how during the campaign, Jezzol had, uh, promised that he would take a pay cut. So, everyone watching at home is like, "Well, what's going on here?" And, you know, you have Jezzol supporters who are like, "What's Rich talking about?" You have people against Jezzol who are like, "Yeah, what happened with that?" So he questions him on it, and he, you know, he brings up the fact, he's supposed, he promised a 25% I believe, pay cut that was supposed to go to, uh, police cruiser. Well, one beholds to me, beholds to me and anybody else, Jezzol's in the crowd. So, now we find out Jezzol's in the crowd, and he shouts out from the crowd the answer to this. And we come to find out that, I guess, in the contract, or what's going on right now with the budget, he's taken that appropriate percentage, and as the time goes on, it will, he'll meet that promise that he had made. Now, as far as a police cruiser goes, where that money goes, that's up to, you know, how it goes forward. That's above my pay grade, but, regardless, it was accounted for. Then, one of my favorite things, and I believe I've said this before on the show, uh, when, actually, when I had City Councillor Rich Cabaseras on, one of my favorite things about this show, uh, about the city council meetings now, is now that, uh, City Councillor Joe Camara isn't president, and he sits with the, with the rest of them, he constantly does these like jabs, these shots. So, he throws out the fact, in case you didn't know this as well, some people I found out didn't even know this, that while our former mayor, Sam Sutter, was mayor, he was driving around in a police cruiser. Well, let me clarify this a little bit. He, uh, one of the vehicles that are appropriated for the police, he was driving around in. It wasn't like, you know, with the, all decked out. But the point is, he was taking away a possible vehicle, I believe it was the police, uh, one of the chief's vehicles, is what it was. So he took away the use of one of those vehicles, so Jezzol Correa, being, you know, the politician that he is, the political science major or whatever that he is, he capitalized on this pretty quick, and he used it as part of his debate to really push the public sentiment that he was gonna do better, you know, than his predecessor. So he used that angle well, and City Councillor Rich Cabaseras tried to use it as a jab, and I believe he took counter-jab, right hook situation from the crowd. Now, again, there are people, I've heard a lot of stuff today, there are supporters of what Rich is doing, there's supporters, and there's denouncers. So, you know, again, if you're one of those people out there, you wanna call in with your opinion, feel free. I believe, right now, we have a caller. Hey, caller, you there? Caller?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Awesome, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, trying to wake up. It's been pretty brutal today. The Z's are, are low, I'm at a low-key Z range. But, um, yeah, so you have a question or comment?
I do indeed.
Awesome, shoot.
So we're discussing last night's meeting, right?
Yes.
Fiasco, no?
Oh, little bit, just, just a little bit, little bit, it got, well, actually, take that back. It was a long-duration fiasco, that thing went on, and I believe there was like numerous fiascos combined piled on top of each other, so what was your, what's your highlight of that?
Well, it was quite the show, that's to say the least. I mean, I, um, there were quite a few, a couple of councillors who, I think were just talking just to speak. It becomes a repetitive thing.
There's a couple terms for that. What are they, some people, bloviating?
Well, that's the word we like to use, isn't it, bloviating?
Grandstanding, all that?
Oh yeah, all that, all that good stuff.
Yep, yep, yep. So, I, well, like I said, what was...
The ego, who, who, who's got the bigger ego?
Yeah, who's got the bigger soapbox, the soapbox contest? But, um, so what was your, what's the one that sticks out to you? I know you gotta have at least one, 'cause there's a couple I could mention. What's, uh, what's your favorite?
Well, my, my fun for last night was when the discussion about the legality came up. That was, that was fantastic to me.
Oh, good, 'cause I'd love to segue off that as you go. So what's your, your specific point about the legality? You're talking about the legality to the, which part?
Well, there's, there's a few different things. Last night, um, Cliff Ponti had mentioned something about the Sanitation Enterprise Fund being illegal. Now, I'm, I think I knew what he meant by that in, in saying that, um, right now, we do not budget for the trash the city collects, which Mayor Jezzol Correa has, has stated that even at one of the debates, the mayoral debate. He brought that to Sutter's attention. The police department, the fire department, the parks, cemeteries, none of those departments budget for trash. So, so technically, right now, it is running illegally because it's not budgeted, although we use general fund dollars to cushion the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. It's not budgeted cash, and it shouldn't.
Did you just say cushion? Are you talking about Cushing's Law? Cushing's Law?
Cushing's Law, isn't that lovely?
Is that, is that what you're referring to, Cushing's Law?
The book, the, the book that trumps our laws, it seems.
Well, that's another issue. For the viewers out there who might not know, Cushing's Law is apparently, uh, you know, it's, it's making a strong reference. It, it's been highlighted, I believe, was, was this like the second or third meeting now?
Yes.
I, I don't know, I'm assuming somebody's got stock in that book.
Yeah, me too. I, there's several versions, so I, I've often wondered which, which version is being looked at.
Look, I don't pretend to get it, that's not my forte, so, my forte... But, again, it's, I believe this is like the third, third meeting we've had these, these books of law highlighted. Cushing's, more Cushing's for the pushings for everybody out there. This law's been highlighted repeatedly, and then, this is now, I think, Cushing's Law, and do you, caller, do you remember what the other one is? I, I'm pretty sure you do, there was another...
Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules and Cushing's Laws, okay? So, I believe Robert's Laws and Cushing's, uh, Cushing's Rules are the 2016 version of what in 2015 was fiduciary responsibility.
Yes.
Every, fiduciary responsibility, all of a sudden, made a vocal comeback. I had nev, well, to me, I never heard it, but apparently, you know, it's a strong political term in business and everything else. That's fine, I get it now, I understand. But man, oh man, are these terms being thrown around to, in my opinion, hop on board what you were saying before, and just show like a, "I know what I'm talking about." Like, "I said this word, I know what I'm talking about," like, you know what I mean?
The, the books are great books. I mean, I'm not taking that away from the authors of the books.
I'm gonna need the Cliff Notes on that.
However, I just don't think that the books are trumping our ordinances, nor should they. If, if explicit, if anybody reads them, it explicitly states in Cushing's Law that the rules in that book are to be followed in absence of a constitution. We live in a state of Massachusetts, we have one of the first constitutions that were written.
So this is like Law of the, uh, Law of the Jungle? This is above Law of the Jungle, pretty much, anything?
Yeah, well, you, you think back to the colonial days, when there wasn't, when, when they first came over from England. That's pretty much what the book was written for. It's not written for 2016, that's for sure.
Listen, that's a, I appreciate that insight, 'cause, again, this is not my forte, so I wouldn't have known that, and to understand it how you're saying it, I might look into this now just to isolate that.
It's a pretty good read, to be honest. It's a, it's a very good read.
Man, again, I'm gonna need the Cliff Notes on that. History, you know, when it goes into stuff like that, I'm more of a, you know, certain time errors, and that's not one of them, but...
Well, Cliff Notes are the problem, that's the problem. We're only getting little Cliff Notes that are being said.
Right.
So when you go back and you read the entire section, it's like, okay, well, you know, that really isn't in reference to citizens that are speaking. That's in reference to those who are sitting in the seats, it's for the legislature, the legislators that are sitting in the seats. And originally, when, when Cushing's Law and those books were written, they didn't even allow the public to attend those meetings. So, so for anybody to try to come forward and say, "Oh, that, that includes the citizens sitting in the audience", guess what? There was no citizen sitting in the audience back when the book was written.
Now, if I could bring it back, so, um, and I have another caller on... Yeah, what was the, what was the actual legality part of the conflict that we're going into? Because I know that, what I thought was hysterical was if you watched the table where the administration was, when the legality question was brought up by, like, I believe it was City Councillor Cliff Ponti, when he brought it up, the table, they all, like, I had, if you're not following me on Twitter, follow me on Twitter @necessarymedia. I was tweeting with some other local, uh, media outlets, media personnel, and one of the things I thought was hysterical was when that was tweeted out about him bringing it up. I mentioned that if you watched that, that table up front with the whole administration, they all kind, they all kinda looked at each other like, "Are we supposed to be talking about this right now?"
Yeah, I wanna answer this question, because it definitely...
You can't tell me it ain't, like, you don't wanna talk about this yet.
I liked the response. I, I personally, I enjoyed the response, because I was on the edge of my seat at home. You know, if they just pushed, if the councillors pushed a little bit more, they might have gotten the answer. You know, here's, here's the thing, user fees have a definition, they have a legal definition. No matter if it's in a Sanitation Enterprise Fund, or if it's in the general fund, any revenues generated from that fee cannot, whether it's considered a receipt, a local receipt, no matter what, it cannot go toward anything than what, what it is collected for. It's, a fee is paid in, in exchange for a service or a good. That service or good is provided because you're paying that fee. For no other reason. Doesn't matter how much money it generates in revenue. They will never be able to use it for anything else. Period.
Right, which, a lot of people out there, you know, there's some people who were informing and are getting more and more informed as the days go on, but I'm sure you know as much as I, there's a lot of people who still just don't understand that concept. So I think they get lost in the whole shuffle of, well, you know, buy this to support this, and just go along with it 'cause we need this. All that may be true, but if you don't have these ducks in a row, you're liable to get right back into a mess that we had before, and, you know, you have to keep up with this stuff. That was the point of a lot of the things going on, is people to be informed and up to date on this. And let's, let's kinda clean up the house before we start to try to settle in again.
And my advice, my advice to everybody is to go online and look up that definition. You don't even have to believe what I'm telling you. Take the time and look up the definition of a, of a user fee.
Shout-out to, uh, Reading Rainbow, remember Reading Rainbow?
Yeah, alright.
You don't have to take my word for it!
You know, the power is in everybody's hands. They can look up the information themselves, and that's what I wish they would do before they said, said one way or another, because at home, I'm screaming at the TV saying, "How can all of these elected officials be saying what they're saying and not know the definition of a, of a user fee?" It will never be able to be, to be used for anything other than what it's collected for. Much in the same way, we can't dip into the, into the water in the sewer department and take those fees and say, "Hey, we're gonna give them to the school department." It doesn't work that way.
Wait, wait, so you're telling me it can't go to the school department?
It cannot go to the school...
Won't somebody please think of the children?
I mean, and not for nothing, right, we've put $1.1 million this year from the general fund into sanitation. We've taken money from the general fund to put into sanitation. There's no, there's not going to be any extra revenue. So I think when some of our councillors say, "Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna make revenue", that confuses me as a resident, because I'm like, okay, if we were short this year, how the hell are we supposed to have, have any kind of revenue to go toward the school department next year? Or the following year? You know, I've been paying attention for two years, we've heard it's for the fire department, we've heard it's for the police department, guess what? The only thing it's for is trash, my friends.
Won't somebody please think of the children?
That's all, you know? Hey, listen, caller, uh, is there anything else you wanna add to that? I'm gonna, uh, moving on, I got one other caller on hold right now. If anybody else wants to call in, feel free. Alright, hey, thanks a lot for tuning in and listening, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Alright, have a good one, bye. Alright, we got another caller on the line. Caller, you there? Caller? Yeah, hello?
Yeah, Mike, you were saying that you listened till 12:40 in the morning?
No, yeah, 12:40, 12:40 hours away.
Well, this is Councillor Steve Long, and I missed it, 'cause I took a nap before, at the end of the meeting. I was so bored with the bloviating from my constituent, Steve Camara. You know, but can you send me that, please?
Send you which part? The actual, the, the meeting?
The last three hours, when I was asleep in my chair.
I hear you. Hey, listen, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this caller Steve Wrong. I, I think you should go, I think we should alter the name a little bit. I like that, though, I like Steve Wrong.
Okay, alright, hey, love the show, best show on earth.
Alright, thanks, man, have a good one. Hey, listen, what he's, what this caller's referring to is there was, again, this meeting went on late, folks, like, late, like, wake up halfway and realize, "Oh my God, we're still in finance." So, what had happened was at some point, in the middle of my social media typings and talking to different people, someone had brought up, yeah, I think I hear somebody sleeping. And, um, you know, I'm not gonna say he was, but if I had to bet on it, out of everybody there, I think it might have been Councillor Steve Long, might have got the elbow jab, like, "Hey, hey, hey, we're still on, we're still on." And that's not even out of disrespect, that's probably out of respect, because he was one of the people, I think, who spoke the least, in a good way. Meaning, he didn't, he wasn't up there just going on rants and raves to, to take it all back moments later. He said a couple words, and then, when it got toward the end of the meeting, if everybody catches this, I might do a, a, if you're not familiar, again, social media-wise, facebook.com/thenecessarymedia, youtube.com/thenecessarymedia. Um, I, I do a lot of video edits and spoofs, and I think I might do one where, at the end of that meeting, because it did almost hit seven hours, and I don't think some of these councillors, you know, their sugar levels were probably low, because there was parts where they were talking, and they were just either repeating themselves, like, again, Steve, Councillor Steve Long, to isolate him, there was parts where he would say like a couple sentences, and I'm like, "See, that's, that's, he's right, he's right." But then he would say the same sentence again, and again, and it wasn't like in a bloviating way, it was like, "Steve needs to go to sleep, like, this meeting is already, it's after 12 o'clock." So, um, yeah, that happened. Now, there's some more things I wanna get into real quick on the show, but before we do that, I usually save this for the last two minutes, I wanna, I wanna get into it a little early. I wanna go into the fan favorite, No Flex Zone Award of the Week. That's right, ladies and gentlemen, you are in the No Flex Zone. The No Flex Zone is a zone where you do not belong flexing. And by flexing, I mean doing anything you're not supposed to be doing, in a place you're not supposed to be doing it. And this week's winner, folks, it's a group of people, and to tell you the truth, I don't, I didn't even have to work for this one, this one was given to me. Again, this city council meeting last night, thank you God, Allah, universe, and any other thing I did not include in that rant, thank you, because it was just provided for me. And it was provided for me by none other than four of the city councillors, Cliff Ponti. You're getting a lot of shout-outs this week, Cliff. We're gonna get you in here, we're gonna get you in here. I'm gonna try to shoot for the next two, three weeks, we're gonna get him in here. But, so yeah, he provided it, so I actually have some video footage of this. Instead of me saying it, "Hey, Cliff, why don't you let him know who's the No Flex Zone winner of the week?"
For us to flex our muscles to the administration, to tell them that you should reconsider a decision that they may or may not have already made, isn't within our jurisdiction. Furthermore, we are not in any situation, because we haven't been equipped with the information necessary to say whether privatization, a waste of energy station, or the current program that we have in place right now is, is, is financially doable. Why? Because the council hasn't been given the information necessary. Why? Because the council doesn't need the information necessary at this point. So for, for, for us to overstep our boundaries, I would not be in support of this, this amendment.
Whoa, whoa, ladies and gentlemen, pump your brakes. Shots fired. I mean, does it get any, any simpler than that? I don't have to really say much, but I'll elaborate on what, what you just saw and heard. What's going on was last night, we had, again, I believe it started, it was a mixture of city councillors, Ray Mitchell, uh, Rich Cabaseras jumped on this, and Steve Camara might. Now, again, if any of these people have a discrepancy with what I'm saying, feel free to clarify. You could call in if you're watching right now, but there is a, um, a city ordinance meeting, which is also another reason why Cliff couldn't, City Councillor Cliff Ponti couldn't be on the show. There's a city ordinance meeting going on right now, I respect that. But if you wanna get in touch with me, or you can even, 'cause this will get, like I said, this will be edited and put up on the YouTube page, and then this will be shared. So if you wanna comment somewhere down below, feel free. But what I believe it was happening was, we had these certain key, there was certain key councillors who were trying to form this like coalition, the coalition of the unwilling to have like a separate entity body of, I believe, five, five individuals, four or five city councillors who would, they would, now take a, uh, not celebrity, uh, whatever, commemorative, for lack of a better word, vote, uh, and see if they could pull together a bunch of councillors that they were gonna use to then, as a sidebody to what the mayor was trying, and his, is trying to push through, through his, uh, executive powers, and like with the contract. Now, this is what it gets to, we're all talking about, again, trash. We're talking about the contract that pays your throw. So what they were doing is trying to set up a sidebody to, to, for the mayor to have to deal with before the mayor can just get anything forward. Now, guess what, ladies and gentlemen, I just said it, the mayor has the executive power. They do not. The mayor is the one who puts forth the proposals. The council is the one who then can approve the budget and whatnot. They either, they can approve or they can deny the budget, that is their power. Now, with that being said, I also understand this, we had Steve Camara on two weeks ago, and he made note on, on other outlets as well, that right now, what's happening is that the mayor uses, the way the rules are set up is he can establish these contracts, and in the contracts, he can state what he wants. Fine and dandy, let's get to that real quick, this show's about to be over, let's get to that. This is what they were trying to do, they were trying to argue against pay-as-you-throw, I mean, through the private, not pay-as-you-throw, pump my brakes. They were trying to argue against the pri, uh, trash pickup going private. They wanted to stay a union. Again, too, quid pro quo, we had a room full of union people, so, what a quid pro quo. But, what they're arguing against is a contract for trash for 10 years. Apparently, they don't like this idea, it's a big problem. A lot of the cities apparently are doing similar things, and this is a business-type thing that they gotta negotiate, but the councillors have a problem with it. So they're trying to make a sidebody, but that, that's gonna be the show, ladies and gentlemen. This one went by a lot faster than I thought. I appreciate everybody out there watching and listening. Give me a rap. Again, make sure to check out social media sites, we're gonna get this thing rocking. Tell your friends, tell your family, tell your kids, tell your husbands, tell your wives. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, good night. We're gonna have to get into this whole hot topic with you and the property issue.
As hot as people think it is.
No, exactly, there are landlords in this community that do not care as far as what's going on with the property.
Sure, but you know, I'd walk my neighborhood any day, anytime, any night. Steve, you know what? If it wasn't for you, this neighborhood would have been totally deteriorated into disaster. Steve, you know what? If it wasn't for you, this neighborhood would have been totally deteriorated into disaster.